All right, good evening. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District April 17th Board Meeting. I am AESD Board President Ryan A. Relis. I call this meeting to order at 5:00 p.m. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: llame al 915-308-0215. Cuando se la pida, introduzca el PIN 189738269 y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has the opportunity to address the board in person during the Agenda's Public Comment Session by 6:30 p.m. Let's begin with the Board Roll Call. To my far right, I have Board Member Ms. Jackie Philbeck.
Present.
Board Member Juan G. Alvarez.
Present.
Board Member Marc A. Lopez.
Present.
Board Clerk Dr. Paolo Macalles.
Presente.
Board President Ryan Relis. Public speakers for closed session agenda items? We have none. And can I get an adjournment to go to closed session?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Dr. Macalles.
Alvarez.
I'm sorry, Dr. Alvarez, Juan Alvarez, trustee Alvarez.
You should just say Mr. Jesse Alvarez.
That's smart. He knows his place. Good, good. Can I get a second by Mr. Lopez? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5:00. Let's go to closed session.
Wasn't that awesome? Let's give them one more round of applause! Alright, introductions and roll call. To my far right, your left, we have Ms. Jackie Philbeck, board member.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to have such a full boardroom. Thank you for being here.
Next, we have Juan G. Alvarez, board member.
Good evening, everybody.
Mark A. Lopez, board member.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Paulo Macalles, board clerk.
Hey, everybody.
I am your board president, Ryan Relis. To my left, Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent.
Face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
All right. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video production on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al 915-308-0215. Cuando se la pida, introduzca el PIN 189738219 y la tecla numeral. We are very excited and would like to thank the sixth grade honor band students that we have here this evening from Theodore Roosevelt Elementary for their upcoming performance. And on a personal note, I am super pumped because the students will be performing "De Calores", one of my favorites. Wasn't that awesome? Let's give them one more round of applause. All right, introductions and roll call. To my far right, your left, we have Ms. Jackie Philbeck, board member.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to have such a full boardroom. Thank you for being here.
Next, we have Juan G. Alvarez, board member.
Good evening, everybody.
Mark A. Lopez, board member.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Paulo Macalles, board clerk.
Hey, everybody.
I am your board president, Ryan Relis. To my left, Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Hello, everybody.
Next, Ms. Dina Milan, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jessie Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Hi, everyone.
Going back to my right, all the way down, I have Ms. Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
We have next to her Belinda Gordillo, the Communications Coordinator.
Good evening, everyone.
We have Yesenia Mancha, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening, everybody.
In the back, we have our interpreters, Alina Abelero Roque and Jasmine Anaya. To my far left, all the way down, we have Ms. Janice Cato, the Technology Support Technician. And in the back, in that room with the mirror that you can see through, we have Mr. Brian Brooks, our Media Services. 3C, report of closed session actions taken. We have none. 3D, can I get an adoption of the agenda? May I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Macalles.
Second, Lopez.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any dissensions? Motion carries 5-0. All right, so now we're going to turn our attention to a special order of business. Now, please note that we're going to deviate from this a little bit, okay? We're going to start with the recognition of Betsy Ross students and then turning our attention to our recognition of the 2023-2024 AESD Classified Employees of the Year. With that, then I'm going to take a five-minute intermission. I know we just started the meeting, but we're going to take a five-minute intermission to allow our families and whatnot to take photos. We have some cool things outside I saw set up with the backdrops, with the easy-ups and all that good things, okay? And then we will reconvene, come in here and continue on with the rest of the meeting. So with that said, I'm turning it over to Dr. Christopher Downing, who will give recognition of our Betsy Ross students as well as, who else do I have here? Claudia Sacks, our Betsy Ross school teacher.
All right. Good evening, board members and to our audience. It's great to see you all here this evening and today we would like to recognize four outstanding students from Betsy Ross Elementary School who will be receiving awards for completing volunteer work with Foodfinders. So this student-led effort really made a huge difference in our community. And how about let's start off with just a round of applause for these outstanding students and their efforts. They not only demonstrated a commitment to academic excellence, but also to our community. And their recent volunteer efforts with Foodfinders not only enriched their own experiences, but also left a lasting and positive impact on the city of Anaheim. In addition, and she's joining us up here, we would like to express our gratitude to Ms. Claudia Sacks, our dedicated sixth grade DLI teacher for her instrumental role in orchestrating this volunteer opportunity and nurturing the spirit of community service among our students. How about a round of applause for Ms. Sacks? So on the agenda, we had that Ms. Amy Mao would be assisting, but instead, we're going to have Magali Rodriguez, who coordinates our district bilingual programs. So please welcome her up and give her a round of applause.
All right, thank you, Dr. Downing. Good evening, board. Members of the community, it's a pleasure to be here with you again. So I just want to start off by saying, we've mentioned before, the ultimate goal of our dual-language immersion program is biliteracy, multilingualism, but it's also looking at being the whole child, the culture aspect, how they engage with their community and ultimately applying those skills back in the community and making a difference. And so our students, as Dr. Downing mentioned, were able to attend or join Foodfinders in Long Beach and bring really their community and their skills to the community. But Morsa wanted to take a time, this moment, and talk about our teacher, she keeps hiding. Claudia Sacks, because I really feel that it's important to honor the fact that she has gone out of her way to ensure that her students have these opportunities. It's not necessarily always accessible to the fingertips of our parents, but I know that's one of the items that parents are continuously looking. How is it that we can apply these Spanish skills in the community? And so she has provided that, and she was there present with the students. And I know all along, all year, she has expressed how important it is to not only have that skillset, but then find a way to use it in the real world. So yes, it's fine to use it in the classroom, but what does it look like when you bring it out now applicable in our society as well? So I'm going to briefly hand the mic over to her because she does want to share a couple of words as well.
Good evening, members of the board and everybody here. And I want to, first of all, just point out that the real superstars here are the students and their families, who I'm very, very grateful for. Gracias por todo el empeño que le ponen durante el transcurso del año, no solo ustedes sino que sus familias. And then obviously, I just want to point out that they, when they came in that day and we were even practicing Spanish terminology in the mornings, they were very excited, a little nervous. But then we turned on, Jonah over there was our DJ, he turned on Selena and Juan Gabriel and they started singing the cumbias and singing. It was a very cultural, when we talk about immersion, it was really an act of immersion in the culture, in the community, in our purpose in life as bilingual and biliterate students. So really, on top of that, I want to also just thank you, Ms. Rodriguez and the district, Dr. Downing, for not only just encouraging, but also allowing those opportunities for our students. Because at the end of the day, there's the academic piece, which the students do so well, but it's the application of that language and the bicultural component that really brings it to fruition. And I'm very, very proud of you as you go on to junior high. So thank you, everybody, for making this happen for our students.
Yeah, of course. I think we all move on now to officially welcome every, welcome and also thank our students. I'd like to please invite our board, if you would please come. And we are going to then officially honor, on behalf of our district cabinet, Dr. Downing. Thank you. Señora Claudia Sacks.
Thank you.
Please, Marcus Cardenas. Here we have Jonah Chacon. Allison Castellanos Rosete. And we also have with us Catalina Franco.
So families, we're going to take a picture.
I know we also have the parents here. They were instrumental in ensuring that the students made it to Long Beach. If you want to join us in the photo, that'd be amazing as well. If you want. If you want to join the photo, I promise we'll share one. Oh, Amy's here, so we'll let Amy in. Go in the picture.
All right, continuing on. We're going to now turn our attention to recognizing our 2023-2024 AESD Classified Employees of the Year. Ms. Dina Milan, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Eric Coleman, our Director of Human Resources of Classified. And Natalia Gonzalez, our Human Resources Supervisor, will be distributing these awards. Great job.
All right, good evening. And thank you all for being here to help us celebrate our AESD's Classified Employees of the Year. I'd like to first introduce Eric Coleman, our HR Director, and thank him for being here every single year to recognize achievements of our classified staff. This will be Eric's last Employee of the Year recognition as he is preparing to retire after having served the students and staff here in AESD for the last 31 years. So thank you.
All right. Well, that was a surprise, okay. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It's not because of me, it's because we have some classified employees to recognize. And I'd like to say a few words before we get started. It's important to appreciate how classified employees are integral to the success of students in public education. From transporting and feeding students in the morning to teaching them vital skills and ensuring our schools are clean, safe, and operating smoothly, classified employees have earned respect as educators and partners in the Anaheim Elementary School District. Each school year, our schools and department sites have the opportunity to nominate a classified employee for their outstanding contributions to their school or department. We are honored to recognize those who are able to join us tonight and celebrate their hard work. When you hear your name called, please come up to the podium to receive your certificate and PIN. We actually have an extra certificate from California State Legislature, Avellino?
Valencia.
Valencia. So we have that in addition that will be given to you tonight. At that time, we will take group picture and then you will move right outside or next to our boards for you to take pictures with your friends and family in front of an AESD background. All right, so here we go. From Edison Elementary, custodian Mauricio Herrera Marquez. From Franklin Elementary School, School Office Assistant Claudia Gonzalez. From Gower Elementary School, Technology Support Assistant Fabiola Barajas. From James Gwynn Elementary School, School Office Assistant Pacharicia Valenzas Danusuela. From Patrick Henry Elementary School, Technology Support Assistant Rahazi Savala. From Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, Instructional Assistant Special Education Rosie Martinez. From Benito Juárez, Instructional Assistant Special Education Isella Bruno. Wasn't able to make tonight, we'll make sure we get that to her. From Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, Lead Custodian Enrique Quinones. From Horace Mann Elementary School, Custodian Victor Pettis Senior. From Marshall Elementary School, Lead Custodian Ruben Castro. Congratulations, Ruben. From Olive Street Elementary School, School Office Assistant Anna San Solana. All right, we'll make sure we get that to her. From Orange Grove Elementary School, Instructional Assistant for Special Education Josephine Calapatia. From Ponderosa Elementary School, Instructional Assistant for Behavior and Intervention, Richard Alta Mirano. From Price Elementary School, Family and Community Engagement Specialist Diana Morales. From Paul Revere Elementary School, Custodian Juan Abundez. From Roosevelt Elementary School, Instructional Assistant for Special Education Vivier Valencia. From Stoddard Elementary School, Custodian Paz Pettis. From Sunkist Elementary, Instructional Assistant for Special Education Sylvia Alfaro. From Westmont Elementary School, Instructional Assistant for Special Education Monica Parra. All right, from our Pupil Services Department, Attendance Liaison Maria Ocampo. All right, from our Pupil Services Department, Attendance Liaison Maria Ocampo. From our School Safety and Operations Department, Risk Management Technician Renee McGuire. All right, in addition to our Classified Employees of the Year, we also are honored to recognize a certain number of employees who have made it to our county level for the Orange County Department of Education. We'd like to recognize them as well tonight. In addition to being Classified Employee of the Year, county nominees, our first one is from the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy, School Office Coordinator Felicia Galinda. From James Madison Elementary School, Family and Community Engagement Specialist, From Betsy Ross Elementary School, Campus Supervisor Rosio Ortiz. And from our Data Department, Programmer Analyst Mark Miao. From our Early Childhood Education Department, Roving Preschool Teacher Maria Alejo. And from our Transportation Department, Dispatcher/Schedular Katie Blust. All right. We have one other county nominee, Ubaldo Cerna, but I wasn't sure if he was able to make it tonight. I'm getting a no. Nope, okay. All right. Well, I present to you our 2324 School Employees of the Year. Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Eric, do you guys want to take with you?
Yes, I need to take care of all of that. So, all of the upstairs, anybody who wants to contribute, I'll send you a quick mail for you.
Thanks, you guys.
Congratulations. Yeah. Congratulations. Okay, and on that note, we are going to take an eight-minute recess, coming back at 7:10.
Okay, and on that note, we are going to take an eight-minute recess, coming back at 7:10.[1140.98]
What an awesome meeting so far. It's always so great when we get to recognize our amazing employees here. And then the entertainment earlier, it's just, it's great. All right, moving on. Now we're turning our attention, we're still on the for the special order of business. And we're turning our attention now to our findings from the engagement phase of the superintendent search with Dr. Joseph Farley and Dr. Suzette Lovely from Education Support Services, the ESS Group. Welcome.
More than thirty days ago that we began this process with you. But as you know, we've been conducting interviews and focus groups with all sorts of your educational partners. And in actuality, we've either had online meetings or in-person meetings with one hundred and seventy-two people. And we had six hundred and twelve fill out our online, our year online survey about your opening. And the questions were consistently the same with all those groups. We wanted them to identify the strengths of the district, the district's issues and challenges, and the desired characteristics in a new superintendent. And all of that went into the leadership profile that's presented to you tonight in a draft form. And it summarizes all of the perceptions and input that we had. We'd like to share with boards that this is not a scientific sampling. It's essentially themes and trends that we heard in our dialogues with all those people. And but it does clearly reflect their perceptions. And sometimes we may disagree with those perceptions, but those things were true to those people who shared them. So what we'd like to do tonight is just really briefly identify a few of those. We're not going to go into in-depth discussion on the on the profile. But it will be used as a screening instrument. Will it be used to help develop questions and help you make a decision on your new superintendent? So we're going to start with the strengths that are referenced in the document. And one of the ones I think that we should say at the beginning is you as a board are a strength. We were just talking about it. You you all have your own perspectives and personalities. But collectively, you're a very strong board, and that's something that can be marketed for your incoming superintendent. The other strengths, and this was one identified by just about every single group, the expanding expanded learning opportunities you provide for students and families. They include the after-school care, enrichment, crucial support, and the behavior support teams. Those were mentioned first by practically every group we 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 met with. And you all know how much work you put into creating those supports. The district was also described repeatedly as an innovative leader in the development of specialized programs. And the ones that were typically mentioned were the community schools initiatives, the music program, the STEAM program, online, the online academy. And then what you've done with your school facilities were also frequently cited. They're really beautiful campuses. And I'm consistently impressed with the model you have where you move to a temporary campus so that you can concentrate on that modernization without students present in the one that's scheduled for modernization. The other thing that was cited as a strength was your administration's relationship with its association leaders. That has contributed to a lot of positive negotiations and problem resolution in your district. We also heard about the strong relationships with some of your education partners, including the city of Anaheim, Disneyland, and Yamaha. Now, we also heard challenges and issues. And I'd say that some of these challenges and issues are similar to the ones that we're hearing in other districts that we've done similar work in over the past year. But the ones that came to the forefront here were concerns about academic outcomes, particularly in reading and mathematics. Groups would like to see kids scoring stronger in those subject areas. There may be a million reasons why that isn't happening, but that still was identified as still a concern. And then the other one that was consistent across the groups was in the area of student mental health. And we heard a lot about what happened as a result of the close downs from COVID and some of the issues that kids brought back with them when they returned to school. And I think it reinforces the absolute importance of that six and a half hours a day, week after week, when kids are in a very caring and safe environment and in in your schools. But we did hear about increased numbers of students with what they described as serious mental health issues and the impact those children have on on your campuses. And obviously, you have are doing everything possible to address them, but they remain issues as well. The other one that was consistent was the issue of declining enrollment. What's that going to mean in the short and long run? Internal communication was identified occasionally. There was some discussion in the document about some silos in your departments that maybe contribute to that a bit. And then the other major concern was your overall fiscal stability and the future reductions that may be coming as a result of funding reductions. So overall, I think this is a very positive report for you. The accolades are important ones, and they're not common ones. They're you are a unique school district that goes beyond the par to help your kids do as well as possible and for their families to do as well as possible. So Suzette's going to give you a little bit more information and and tell you about next steps. And then we'll answer any questions that you might have.
As Dr. Farley said, it's been such a positive experience spending the time here in the district and with your staff and your parents and all of your education partners. And we appreciate the time that people have given to us. The second half of the leadership profile that you see are the survey, a summary of the survey, online survey results. Six hundred and twelve survey respondents for a district this size. I think you win as a district in the response rate. It's pretty incredible that people took the time and they gave their their opinions and their feedback. And so kudos and thank you to all of the members of the staff and anybody in the audience that filled out the survey. It's very helpful to have that information as well. So the survey was specific about key categories that the board should consider in finding the next superintendent or in examining resumes and screening applications. One was in the area of expertise and experience. And people ranked by order of critical importance, the skills or the expertise and experience they thought would be most important. Ninety-one percent of your respondents said teaching and learning is number one. That's great to see. We don't always see that in in districts. And then eighty-nine percent right behind that was understanding school and community culture. That came in as a close second. You can see from the room tonight being filled with so many incredible families and staff members as well. This is important. People feel connected and they want someone to come in that understands that connectiveness and what happens here in Anaheim. A second area of the survey that people had to pick five categories out of ten that that they felt were most important relative to leadership qualities. Those are the competencies and mindset that signal a person, a leader, is good at guiding and influencing people. Number one that came out on the survey was creating an atmosphere of trust. Number two, this that was selected was knowledgeable about current practices surrounding teaching and learning, which again is really great. People know this is your mission here is teaching and learning, and they recognize that. And then third was developing shared understanding of district goals and priorities. And then the last area that we asked about were those personal attributes, those characteristics and and qualities that describe a person's style and and how they interact with others. So number one was problem solver, with sixty-one percent of your respondents saying that that was the most important. And then somebody that's inclusive came in second with fifty-six point five percent ranking that a second. And then a good listener came in third at forty-nine point three percent. And then the last part of the survey were ten questions that just asked about the general conditions across the district. And again, this is unique because in so many areas we hear facilities as being such a concern. And the opposite occurred here in Anaheim. One of the most favorable responses, the highest, it was like an eighty, the eightieth percentile of people that strongly agreed or agreed with your facilities. Also, in the area of high-quality education, people feel that the high-quality education is here. Maybe the academic outcomes aren't quite to what people would like them to be, but the quality of education students are receiving is high. And then also students feeling valued and connected to their schools. So you've done a great job, especially in the post-pandemic era of making sure that 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 students know that they they're cared about here. And then lastly, just next steps, we're continuing to talk to a number of prospective candidates. And we're receiving a lot of interest in the position. It is on EdJoin. People have already been submitting applications. It does not close until April twenty-ninth. So people have a few, a week and a half, I think it was wise on the board's part to have the closing of the position come after the leadership profile report is out. People will use that as their north star in deciding to apply and also preparing their paperwork. Interviews will be May seventeenth through May nineteenth, and then the board's final selection. You'll do some validation visits and such in between interviews. But your final selection will be done at your June twelfth board meeting. So with that, we'll invite Dr. Farley, if you want to come back up, we'll see if the board has any questions or any discussion.
All right, opening it up for questions. Any questions, anyone? Yeah.
Appreciate you taking such a deep dive and being so detailed in this and and, you know, in this process. And I really did appreciate the comments and and everything that was brought in. And I think that's good for all of us to to see that, just as reminders. And so I appreciate the efforts and the the in-depth efforts you have made during this during this process. Thank you.
We specifically decided not to get into all the details tonight because in a sense, the profile itself stands on its own. And it will it'll guide us through the rest of the selection and guide you in in making your decision. And I do think it is a reflection of, an accurate reflection of what we heard. Again, much of that is perception. Sometimes that may differ from reality. But I think it's important that we chronicled that.
Yeah, and to just, you know, just, you know, support my comment or my trustee Philbeck's comments in the sense of the time you guys took and the conversations that you had with us and, you know, just really the outreach out there, you know, it was it was really cool. And I appreciate it. And I appreciate the the well-detailed delivery of everything in the sense of how you had it organized with the comments and what people said. And yes, it was a little overwhelming when I first opened it. I was like, oh, my gosh, you know, like. But 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 now I understand why we had that, you know, hundred-character word. It wasn't asking for a dissertation. It was asking for short snippets. And this is why we're gathering this, because you're creating it, not, you know, like, it doesn't need to be a whole dissertation, you know, that they're submitting. So and with that said, you know, looking at and how I approached it, and I don't know how you guys did, but I read through all the comments first, and then I was like, okay. I took a day, and then later that night, I read the report because I wanted to really just sit there and see if the report captured it. And honestly, like, I walked away with like, this is, this truly reflects what was listed here.
We will share the report with the candidates.
Great.
Who you select for interview. And there will be specific questions about the profile during your interviews. And I think it's a good place to begin when you're in a transition of leadership.
Absolutely. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, let us move on. And thank you all both very much.
We do just need you to accept the report as written without any revisions.
Next, 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 next line right here. It is recommended the Board of Education accept and approve the Leadership Hiring Profile Report presented by Education Support Services, ESS Group for publication with no revisions. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck, second.
Second.
Secuted by Dr. McCullough. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five oh. And once again, thank you very much for all your hard work on this. Thank you. Okay, moving on to news and updates. We will start with our parent leadership group updates, DAC, DLEC, PLI, and PTA. Any? Nope. All right. Association updates, AEEA, ASMA, or CSEA? Nope. Communications and public information. All right, take it away.
Okay. Good evening, board members, Dr. Downing, cabinet, and guests. My name is Belinda Gordillo, and I'm excited to share the district news and updates. So the first thing is, for the month of March, the school with the most improved attendance was Orange Grove Elementary School. So as always, Dr. Downing and other cabinet members and staff visited the school yesterday, actually, and treated the kids to a paleta. So that was exciting. Orange Grove did exceptionally well in improving their attendance, and they had a lot of great strategies. So we were very grateful to Orange Grove for their hard work. And on March fourteenth, AESD hosted its esports competition at the River Arena. This was truly an amazing event. We had twenty-three schools from AESD that were represented, and we had three hundred and five students. So it was a really, really fun event. We want to thank our DES team who put this whole event together. And even leading up to this event, they created lessons for the students so they could learn about marketing, branding, good sportsmanship, and just really key elements so they could be successful. And this could be really a really great learning opportunity for them. And on March sixteenth, our DLI program, specifically our Korean DLI curriculum specialist, visited the Buena Park Community Center to promote Korean DLI program as well as Mandarin and Spanish. And so we just wanted to let the community know that we are here and that we're offering all of these great DLI programs. And the week of March eighteenth was really exciting. Many of our schools hosted musical performances. And so a lot of the students were able to get exposure to the arts for the first time, and some have been in it for a few years. So it was really exciting to visit many of these. And on March twentieth, Mariachi Sol de Mexico visited Westmont. We had a lot of our board and cabinet and community come and attend this free concert that they provided for the entire AESD. And it was just a testament that Mariachi is such a big component of our enrichment program through our ELOP. And so it was just an amazing night for all. And then on the twenty-third, you already heard, you met the four wonderful students and their teacher, Ms. Sacks. So I won't go in too much detail, but I just wanted to say that, again, we congratulate these students for reaching two hundred and sixteen children in Long Beach. And then on March twenty-third, we hosted our speech tournament. There was a hundred and twenty AESD students from thirteen schools who attended. And then overall, started one first place. And we want to thank our coaching staff and as well as our leadership assistants and everyone who participated and came out to support. I know Mr. Relles took a selfie with Jacob Vargas, who who's an actor who was actually there. I don't have the picture, but I'm sure Mr. Relles does. And for those who don't know, this actor played the brother of Selena in the movie, AB Quintanilla. So it was a, it was an exciting event for for everyone. And then on March twenty-fifth, Benito Juarez School received a visit from Audrey Rivera. She's a Mexican head counsel of the Mexican Embassy. She came on Benito's Juarez, in honor of Benito Juarez's birthday. And she went around and talked to students of all grades, DLI programs. She brought her team. And we want to thank Ms. Nielsen, the principal of Benito Juarez, as well as the VP, Mr. Kelly. They welcomed and toured our guests. And then the kids were able to ask questions and kind of learn a little bit about the history of Benito Juarez. So that was a great day. And I know I was there as well. And they were so impressed with our, the way our classrooms were in the DLI and how all the way from the little ones to the to the older ones were experiencing this dual immersion. And on May twenty-seventh, we had participation from fifth-grade students from Ponderosa Elementary who attended the Conga Room Farewell. Conga Room is a legendary venue. I don't know if if you all know, they're located in Los Angeles. They are going to be closing, but they assured us that the Conga Kids Program will continue. And so they were very grateful that AESD was the only Orange County district that came out and our students performed on stage and on the red carpet. So congratulations and thank you to Dr. Moreno and Mrs. Chambers, who came to support and run this program again for our ELOP. And then on March thirtieth, we had Roosevelt and Jefferson. They were recognized by the Association of Teachers Educators. And they were awarded twenty-five hundred dollars from their Give Back Program. And this program recognizes schools for making a significant impact in their community. So congratulations to both schools. Very well deserved. And also, this month, in past, in March, AESD received the 2024 Best Communities for Music Education Award for the sixth year in a row, and this is something given from NAMM. So this is wonderful. AESD was recognized for dedication, for providing exceptional music education opportunities to all students in our district. So we thank the NAMM Foundation for the recognition. We have a small banner in the back there, but every school will get a banner just like that. And so we are very thankful to all of our music instructors throughout the district for their continued dedication. And on April eighth, it was very exciting. It was actually the day after spring break. And our teachers put together the most wonderful solar eclipse activities. So some of the kids went outside. We had glasses, of course, special glasses, but indoors, too. They did viewing parties, and it was just a wonderful day for everyone. And April twelfth, it was a 2024 Kinder Caminata, which is held at Fullerton College. This year, five hundred and fifty students from AESD attended. There was fifty stations. We had a few parents that came to Chaperone, but it was a great day. The students, as young as five years old, were able to experience what it would be like to go to college. So this is a great initiative that gets them thinking about what their future looks like. So we're so grateful to all of our educators who took the time to take our students. And so that was a really fun, cool thing to be part of, too. And Dr. Grace was named ACSA's 2024 yeah, Central Office State Administrator of the Year. This program honors exceptional leaders who demonstrate commitment to an equitable education system and have made significant contributions to education. So we're so grateful again to Dr. Grace for all that she does. And that's my last slide. Save the date for some upcoming events. And that's it. Thank you so much. Any questions? No questions. Okay.
Thank you. That's so exciting. I love all the, I love, this is my, one of my favorite parts of the board meeting. Public speakers, speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. I have one public speaker here this evening, Ms. Tiffany Alva, who is here representing First Five OC. Welcome. Oh, and just so you know, Tiffany, this is how it works. You have a total of three minutes to go ahead and give your public comments. Once you have thirty seconds remaining, my clerk here, Dr. McCullough, is going to hold it up and give you a yellow to signal thirty more seconds. So let's wrap it up, all right? all right? Because we're so busy tonight, right, Al, you know?
I hope my giggling doesn't count as part of my three minutes. Okay. So good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and guests. My name is Tiffany Alvin, I'm the Director of Partnership and Government Affairs for First Five Orange County, also known as the Children and Families Commission of Orange County, so you'll see that in your agenda item tonight. I definitely picked the right night to come to your meeting because I am so impressed with all of the great work that you guys are doing. But I am here, actually here tonight, to thank you and your amazing early learning team for the hard work that they do to support our youngest learners and our families. Tonight, you will be taking action to approve our funding, and we are extremely grateful for your partnership. For those of you who may not know who First Five Orange County is, we are dedicated to improving the well-being of young children and families. We were established twenty-five years ago by voters who approved a portion of tobacco tax, and it is dedicated to support programs and services for early childhood development. We are a public agency, and we are responsible for the local funding here to support children ages zero to five, or prenatal to five. The collaborative and the partnership with the Orange County School Districts, just like yours, we have been able to yield significant impacts on early learning, and I'd like to just take a moment to highlight three of those for our kindergarten readiness initiative. The first is around community engagement. The school district partnerships have helped us connect with the communities, and through these relationships, we have been able to reach over twenty-three thousand families annually with our early learning and health-related programs. The second is around drawing down additional funding. First Five has provided technical assistance in supporting Orange County School Districts to draw down over fifty million dollars annually here in the county for preschool services. This is also including your school district. The third and final is around the Early Development Index data collection. This is probably our most notable initiative, since Orange County is currently the only county in the nation that gathers this data for, from every public school district that has a kindergarten population. The E D I serves as a valuable tool in allocating resources, forming strategic partnerships with community organizations, and also enhancing curriculum and learning activities. Thank you so much for your time and your continued partnership. We could not do this work without you and your district, and definitely your early learning team and Dr. Grace. Thank you. Together, we are making a lasting difference in the lives of all of our children and here in Orange County, and thank you. And I was under my three minutes.
You're awesome, thank you very much. All right, moving on to our superintendent's report. There is none this evening. Then our consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There's no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled at this time? Trustee Philbeck?
Yes, President Relles, I need to pull item, it's on the page four, B six.
Eight B six, okay.
Just B six, it's on page four.
Trustee Alvarez? Trustee Lopez? None? Okay. And I have none to pull either. Okay. It is recommended the Board of Education approve slash ratify the following consent calendar items, with the exception of item eight B six, which was pulled and will be voted on separately. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Dr. McCulloughs.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Four oh. Five oh, I'm sorry. Pulled item was eight B six.
I'm moved to discuss item eight B six.
Yes. So moved by trustee Alvarez, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion?
I'd like to read a statement first. As many of you may know, I also serve proudly as a member of the First Five Orange County Board of Commissioners, and due to my role on the Board of Commissioners, I have been advised that I should refrain from participating in the discussion or taking any action with respect to the contract with the First Five Orange County Board of Commissioners. Therefore, I will not be commenting, which is killing me, but, or voting on this board item. Thank you.
Actually, I appreciate the comment that the First Five Commission representative made, but can I get further clarification from cabinet on how this actually looks at our sights?
What's unique and different about this funding is they work with us, they come in, they work with us, and we develop a plan, a three-year plan, and it's looked, it evolves over time. Years ago, the emphasis was on having a nurse and a nutritionist, and we got programs in place, and as a district, one of the things that we've really worked on with the commission as well as our own team is making sure that our preschool program is aligned and part of every campus and every school culture, so that it was operating as if it was a separate entity. And through the partnership and through the data we collect with the Early Developmental Index, we've really been able to pinpoint the community and respond to the needs that our students come to us with. So we're able to look at that data and adjust not only our kindergarten instruction but our preschool instruction, and then we also are able to, part of the Network Anaheim, which is a community agency in town that we support, they take a lead role in working with the city on provide, making sure we have partnerships and programs in the areas that indicate that families might not have as much resources to develop the school readiness. So it's, it's all about school readiness, and we've participated in a group that tries to get the word out about the importance of well visits, the importance of Cal Optima or, you know, Medi-Cal was extended through the pandemic, but then you had to re-register afterwards. And once you get into that pattern of not registering, so they've been very instrumental in helping us with messaging. Belinda's been helping us with that as well, so it's a, it evolves, and they're our partners, and they've been here since our preschool has been here. So it's exciting to, that they're still able to support us. You know, in past years, it's been more, but I guess that's a good thing, that maybe people aren't using as much tobacco as they used to. So it's exciting, and we look forward to the continued partnership with the commission.
And the foundational materials that they've created that are linked on our website, and we appreciate them launching those online curricula at one of our schools. So thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Okay, so pulled item eight B six. It is recommended the Board of Education approve agreement number F C one, or F C I S D five zero one between this district and the Children and Families Commission of Orange County, fifteen oh five East Seventeenth Street, Suite two thirty, Santa Ana, California, nine two seven oh five.
So moved.
To accept seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars to implement the Kindergarten Readiness Initiative Program effective July first through June thirtieth, and will consist of the following annual breakdowns. Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five year. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-two cents for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for the two hundred, for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars for E D I expenses. Trustee Alvarez has made the motion, and Lopez has given the second. Let's do a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
One, I abstain. Thank you.
So it is four ayes, one abstentions, zero nays. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the action calendar, starting with the superintendent's office. It is recommended the Board of Education receive for first reading revisions to the following board policies and administrative regulations.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second Alvarez.
Okay, so motion made by trustee McGallas, seconded by Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four slash forty-eight, designating Wednesday, May eighth, twenty-twenty-four as California Day of the Teacher throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District. Moved by Dr. McCulloughs, seconded by Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four slash forty-nine, designating the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four as Classified School Employee Week throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District. Moved by trustee McGallas.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four slash five oh, acknowledging campus supervisors and school safety assistants for their hard work, dedication, and daily support of our students, declaring Thursday, May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, as Campus Supervisor and School Safety Assistant Appreciation Day throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District.
Second.
Moved by trustee McGallas, seconded by trustee Philbeck. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. Educational Services. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four slash forty-six, acknowledging the school crossing guards for their continued excellent service to the youth of our community, and declaring May eighth, twenty-twenty-four as School Crossing Guard Appreciation Day throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District. Moved by trustee McGallas.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Please. Just a clarification that for our school crossing guards, what's our, do we have work with the city? Can you explain that process a little bit that, you know, that they're not just our guards that we work through the city or how we get them? Because I've had some parents ask me for neighborhoods.
So the crossing guards are paid by the city, they work with us. What they do is they do an analysis of all the different stops, right? So if there's a concern from our community or from our parent community, we reach out to the city, they do a traffic study to determine if, based on, if there's a need there, right? And so wherever they're located at this time is based upon the city determining that there is a safety concern, and they provide the safety, the campus, the, I'm sorry, the crossing guard.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four slash forty-seven, designated May eighth, twenty-twenty-four, as National School Nurse Day throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. S E L P A, none. Human Resources. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the new job description and recruitment for district family and community engagement specialists. This position will be placed on range ten of the Classified Salary Schedule effective April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck.
Lopez.
Seconded by Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised job description and recruitment for the Director of Maintenance and Operations. This position will be moved from range twenty-five. Moved by trustee McGallas, seconded by, seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the new job description for the Senior Director of Safety and Operations Transportation. This position shall be placed on range seventeen of the Certified Management Salary Schedule based on two hundred and twenty days effective July first, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Alvarez.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries five oh. All right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero one to the position of Senior Director of Safety and Operations Transportation effective July first, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon?
Congratulations to Tracy Golden. Tracy will move into this role effective July first. With the move into this new role, we will close the Senior Director of School Safety and Operations vacancy as well as the Director of Transportation vacancy. Congratulations, Tracy.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised job description and name change for Director of Business/Fiscal Services, formerly Director of Business Services. This position shall remain on range twenty-nine of the Classified Management Salary Schedule or shall be placed on range sixteen of the Certified Management Salary Scale based on two hundred and twenty days effective July first, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion? So moved by trustee Lopez.
Second.
Seconded by trustee, Dr. McGallas. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant number zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero two to the Classified Management Position of Director of Business/Fiscal Services effective July first, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Alvarez.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon?
Congratulations to Eduardo De La Cruz. Effective July first, Eduardo will move into this new role, which will then close the Fiscal Services Supervisor vacancy. Congratulations, Eduardo.
Great. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised job description and name change for Directors of Facilities Planning and Construction Services, formerly known as the Director of Facilities and Planning. This position shall be moved from the range twenty-five to range twenty-nine of the Classified Management Salary Schedule or shall be placed on range sixteen of the Certified Management Salary Scale based on two hundred and twenty days effective April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Alvarez. I'm sorry, trustee Lopez, can I get a second?
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion?
Just one question. In the exhibit for this item, I was wondering if you just elaborate on the discrepancy on page four of the exhibit with the education experience that's listed there.
Sure, on the job description? Sure, so for, we're trying to align as many of the management job descriptions in the same class as we can, and so part of that alignment is to add the certificated requirements as well as the classified requirements. What this does is it allows a greater audience to, that might be interested in the position to apply. So certificated employees going into this position must have a, their credential, their administrative credential. A credential with C T C is not something that classified employees have or would have to have. And so with the administrative credential for certificated employees, to have that administrative credential, you have to have your master's degree. So that is the reason for that there. That is not what we've generally had for our Directors of Classified, so that's the difference. And the reason for adding that in there, again, just to align most of the positions and to allow for a greater number of people to apply for the positions.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero three to the Classified Management Position of Directors of Facilities Planning and Construction Services effective April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck.
Second Alvarez, and just to clarify, it's dash zero four.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon.
Thank you. Congratulations to Alex King. Effective April eighteenth, Alex will move into this new role, which will then close the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and Construction Services vacancy. Congratulations Alex.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised job description and name change for the Coordinators of Facilities Planning and Construction Services, formerly Coordinator of Facilities Planning and Construction. This position shall remain on range twenty-two of the Classified Management Salary Schedule effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Lopez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Philbeck. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero four to the Classified Management Position of Coordinator of Facilities Planning and Construction Services effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion? So moved by trustee Lopez. Can I get a second? Seconded by trustee Philbeck. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh.
Thank you. Congratulations to Henry Castro. Effective April eighteenth, Henry will move into this new role, which will then close the Facilities Planner vacancy. Congratulations to Henry.
Moving on to number eleven. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised job description for Transportation Operations Supervisor. This position shall remain on range eleven of the Classified Management Salary Schedule effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion? So moved by trustee McGallas.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero five to the Position of Transportation Operations Supervisor effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Lopez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon.
Congratulations to JP Jones. Effective July first, JP will move into this new role, which will then close the Transportation Services Coordinator vacancy as well as the Fleet Supervisor vacancy. Congratulations to JP.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the new job descriptions for Director of Special Program/Early Childhood Education. This position shall be placed on range sixteen of the Certified Management Salary Schedule based on two hundred and twenty days effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Philbeck.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero six to the Position of Director of Special Program/Early Childhood Education effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion? So moved by trustee Philbeck. Can I get a second?
Lopez.
Trustee Lopez, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon.
Congratulations go to Linda Ruiz. Effective July first, Linda will move into this new role, which will then close the Director of Special Programs vacancy. Congratulations to Linda.
All right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the new job description for Coordinator of Preschool through Third Grade Early Childhood Education.
So moved.
This position shall be placed. Dr. McGallas.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero seven to the Position of Coordinator of Preschool through Third Grade Early Childhood Education effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion? Okay, moved by trustee Philbeck, seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon.
Congratulations to Kim Govea. Effective July first, Kim will move into this new role, which will then close the Curriculum Specialist for Preschool through Third Grade vacancy as well as the School Readiness Coordinator vacancy. Congratulations to Kim.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the revised job description for the Director of Human Resources. This position shall remain on the range twenty-nine of the Classified Management Salary Schedule or range sixteen of the Certified Management Salary Schedule based on two hundred and twenty days effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
Motion made by trustee Alvarez, second.
Lopez, second.
Lopez, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero eight to the Classified Management Position of Director of Human Resources effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by trustee Alvarez. Can I get a second? Seconded by trustee Philbeck. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Congratulations to Natalia Gonzalez. Effective July first, Natalia will move into this role, which will then close the Human Resources Supervisor vacancy. Congratulations Natalia.
It is recommended the Board of Education approve the new job description for Coordinator of Induction Programs.
So moved.
Moved by trustee McGallas.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by trustee Alvarez. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant zero four one seven two zero two four dash zero nine to the Position of Coordinator of Induction Programs effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by trustee Alvarez. Can I get a second?
Second Lopez.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. Ms. Mellon.
Congratulations to Susan Holtz. Effective July first, Susan will move into this new role, then closing the Induction Curriculum Specialist vacancy. Congratulations to Susan.
Great, thank you. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four slash fifty-two reflecting the closing of District Office Certified and Classified Management Vacancies beginning April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and being closed no later than July first, twenty twenty-four as listed on Exhibit nine D point two one. Can I get a motion? So moved by trustee Philbeck. Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Carries five oh. All right. We're almost done everyone, good job. All right. Administrative Services. It is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four slash fifty-one, designating Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as School Bus Driver Appreciations Day throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District, acknowledging bus drivers for their continued excellence in their service to youth within the community.
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by trustee Alvarez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lopez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. And here we are. For discussion, we will start with trustee Philbeck.
Good job, President Rilis. That was a lot of reading. You got through that. Take a drink of water.
I honestly, trustee Philbeck, think I read more right now than I have like all year. Like, so.
Okay, um, I will start off and just briefly mention, cause I'm sure everyone else, uh, all my colleagues were there, at the East Sports River Arena, the Rocket League, which is probably one of the most fun events we do for the year. And I think it was, uh, Dr. Grace, twenty-three schools participated. And, um, it was our, uh, DS team that hosted the event. And there were teachers, there were parents. It's just a lot of fun and they do the esports and it's quite competitive and it's just a blast. It's just really a lot of fun. So congratulations to everyone that put that together because we really, uh, that was the day we, we shined very well, you know, shone, I'm not sure. Correct me here, teacher. You teach math, okay. We, we were, we, we were shining that day. It was, it was, it was a lot of fun. Okay.
I think if you're honest, I'm like bright like a diamond, you know?
Like a diamond, like a diamond. Okay, so, um, and then I also want to mention that I attended an event. Actually, I attended through First Five, as I mentioned before, Commissioner. And it's, it was called The Power of Advocacy. And we were learning all about bills and how they become laws and the process, how to advocate, follow the bills through committees and hearings, testify in person or by phone, letters, group. And it was, it was just a really great event. And even though I have, I've actually worked at the State Assembly many years ago and been involved in legislation and advocacy for many years, it was really great to kind of get in there and start at square one and say, this is how it starts. This is where it progresses and moves through. And I really appreciated the opportunity, um, to be with, also with First Five and, you know, get all of that information because I think that a lot of us need to know how we can help through legislation and what, how we can advocate for our students and our families and our communities. Uh, it was a great dinner and there actually, uh, Assemblywoman Cotty Petrie Norris was the speaker. So that was wonderful. Um, let's see. I attended as many of the musicals as I could. I think I got to all of them, uh, except at Luera. I didn't get to see Madagascar. If anybody filmed that or whatever, I would absolutely love to, to see that. But so many of them were at the same time and with, um, restrictions on my schedule just happening that week. I did go to Price to see Moana, but it was early in the morning for more like a, kind of a dress rehearsal and practice, but it was just fantastic. Gwen, during the day, I met with some of my other cabinet members and we watched Aladdin at Gwen in the outside forum, beautiful. And then I attended, uh, I was at Ross, but it was actually Stoddard who put on another Aladdin. And I just had, I was impressed at the talent and the confidence and just how well-run these productions were, even for the lighting and the sound. And it just amazes me. And you know, I've seen some of these kids two, three years now when they started, you know, earlier and now they're progressing into full-blown leads. And it's, that was just really exciting. I enjoy those. I wish we could have those all the time, but I know there's a tremendous amount of work, months and months and months of work that goes into putting those on. So thank you to everyone, including the parents that do contribute so much to these performances. I was lucky, I was fortunate to be able, through the Library Board, to serve on the committee to choose our Anaheim poet laureate. And you will all be hearing more about that. That person should be introduced pretty soon. Um, Laura Houston was also on that committee with me. And it was really something different. I have not, uh, I haven't done anything like that before and I'm not as familiar with poetry as I am with other literacy. So it was really, uh, it was great. I, I liked it, I enjoyed it. And I'm looking forward to the person that we chose, being able to be also involved through our school district and perhaps bring some programming to us or some receptions or some assemblies, things like that. So that was one of the things that I requested. Um, let's see. The Parent Leadership Institute, we had a picture and a meeting. That's always a really fun day. And I'm, it almost makes me cry when I look around and see how many there are and how many are growing. And it's just such a wonderful group. I know that they are very, very important partners with this district. They do so much and they are appreciated. I love being in their midst and, um, just a great bunch of parents. Uh, I'll mention, as some of my other colleagues went to the OCO statewide and local education town hall, which was partnering to transform California schools at St. Anthony's. I believe that was last Friday. And that was really insightful, um, interesting and I enjoyed it. Uh, before a lot of this, I did attend the Anaheim Public Library Mystery Authors Luncheon. It was true crime stories this year, which was pretty exciting. I mean, the, the real nitty-gritty of, of the true stories of murders and things. So I mean, it was a little deep, but it was very interesting. Kindergarten, uh, Kamenada, that was a blast. There's just, what can you say about seven hundred kindergarten students, you know, running around and just a blast and cuteness overload and they were having the best time. I'll also mention that this weekend I did stop by the, a community resource and health fair because also First Five was there promoting our Kid Builders program, which you can find on our website. I highly recommend you look at it. Activities from birth or two years through five years. It was put on by, um, the resource fair was put on by Supervisor Sarmiento along with Mayor Protam Tyvet Phan. And I hope I said that correctly. It was, I would, I would say wow and a lot of exclamation points. There were so many resources in this one place that it was unbelievable. And I also appreciated that there were, um, varied resources. There were child development, there were insurance, there was eye screenings, there were senior, uh, resources. So it was, there was even Zumba. What can I say? Yes, and I did a little bit of it. I hope there's not video, but there probably is. Um, I, I believe it was Vice Principals Week. Did I get that correctly like a week or two ago? And just want to say thank you, we appreciate you. And, uh, again, yes, thank you, our music instructors and all of our teachers for propelling this into another music award, but especially our music teachers. And I was going to mention that I did go to the Little House on the Prairie 50th Reunion Festival, although that has absolutely nothing to do with school business, but I had a blast. So I'll just throw that in there. I can tie it in because I had to miss a school event to go, but sometimes, sometimes that happens. Thank you for listening and that concludes my report. And you're laughing.
Great. Trustee Alvarez.
Thank you, Board President. So I did also attend the, uh, esports competition on, um, March fourteenth at the River Arena. It was, uh, we made it a family event, so I took my whole family. Uh, we ended up cheering on the Demolitioners, right? We kind of took to their team. So we were cheering them on. It was really great to see just the families getting engaged in the, the competition. It's really top-notch. It literally feels like we're in some kind of television show where we're, we're in the arena and how it's, uh, laid out and how it, it's all managed. We're in the arena and how it's laid out and how it's all managed. So thank you to everyone who put that together. I know it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work and thank you to the River Arena for hosting us and being so gracious with their space. But yeah, so the Demolitioners ended up winning, but it was still fun. But my son Reese was really in for the Demolitioners, so just wanted to give them a shout out. So the week of March 26th or 27th, I actually was, I afforded the opportunity to shadow the Principals in Area 2. So I was able to visit Henry, Marshall, Gower, Mann and Luera. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Beeson, Principal Pulaski, Principal Camas, Principal Agdalina and Principal Barrow for hosting me at their sites. Spent about an hour with them, just kind of like, I wanted them to just take me through their day in that window of time I was there and they graciously did that. I know sometimes people feel pressured, they have to put on a show, but no, I really just wanted to see what the job looked like in the little window of time. The one takeaway for me is that we have amazing people working at our sites like always, but then also, I guess you could say the second takeaway for me is that every site is so different and has its unique needs and unique kind of personality, right? And so the take that we take on providing the resources to these school sites based on need and number is, I think, validated by that visit, right? That some sites need more of this while others need more of that. So I just really appreciate being able to kind of spend some time with some of our Principals. I know I had, had a chance to do that for a while, so thank you to Chantal for putting that together, helping me schedule that. And that's pretty much all I have for my report, so thank you.
Great. Trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things as well. Most of it's been covered by Ms. Cordillo and my board colleagues, but I did get a chance to also go to the esports championship tournament, also at the, at the River Arena. To me, it felt like it was a TV show meets like a rock concert because you had the student musicians, you had the signage, electronic signboards, the music, of course, all of the unique team names. I enjoyed those as well. Got some pictures, I can't remember where all of them were, but it was very creative, I think, in the, the names that they came up with. March 20th, I was able to attend, I believe it was the final community schools meeting at Key Elementary, where we had an opportunity to get into small groups with a community, talk about some strategies to get not only parent involvement, but active engagement with the parents, which I thought was very productive. I couldn't stay too long because I had a couple other events I had to go to, but it was a good turnout and I think it was a good close to the school year in terms of our community schools. There's also, I think there was a nacho bar that they had. So I, fortunately, I couldn't grab anything to eat, I just had to take off, but it looked good. And then I made my way over to the Mariachi event. What was interesting to me was how inspiring it was for a lot of the students because many of the performers were alumni of Westmont and mentioned how they had attended this school. And I think that really puts that in perspective for a lot of our scholars to say that they could do that too someday. So I think it was very inspirational. I enjoyed it. I know Ms. Philbeck was there as well. And then I also attended the Stoddard presentation of Aladdin, which was at Betsy Ross. So I got nostalgic. It was an evening of nostalgia with that. Took me back to 1992, I think it was. Yeah. And then, a theme song going on. And then April 11th, I was also able to attend with some of my colleagues, the California Partnership for the Future of Learning, the State and Local Education Town Hall. It's kind of a mouthful. I want to thank Maritza Bermudez for the invitation, really making a very welcoming and inclusive environment for everybody to be able to join. It was a lot of, a lot of background work to it. There was a lot of technical aspects. There was a lot of remote meetings, call-in that was going on. So there was a lot of, some technical issues that happened, but there was, you know, persevering through a lot of that was, I think, the takeaway and really bringing people together from across the state. Because it was, it was a pretty Herculean effort in terms of getting everybody in the same room, whether in person or virtually, to be a part of it. And we had community partners from across the city and across the region. The mayor was there as well, so it was a good time. Our county supervisor was there as well. So I think it was good to be able to have, just a FaceTime with some of our other representatives. And then, I don't know if Ms. Cordillo might correct me on this, but I think we have a Boys in Skate Park Design Workshop coming up on April 23rd. I saw something online about it. It's at Roosevelt Elementary is what it's being marketed as, so I just want to make sure that I'm not giving out misinformation, but that's supposed to be on Tuesday, the 23rd. Okay. We just hot off the press. Okay. 6:30 to 7:30 at Roosevelt. So that will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. McCollus.
All right, everyone. Good evening. Right before spring break, I did get the opportunity to swing by Clara Barton for their soccer tournament. I wanted to come right before this meeting too, because I know that they are at Revere. Had to cheer on my alumni or my, what is it called when you graduate from a place? My alma mater. Yeah. Go Barton Bees. Also, on the 15th, I was able to go to Stoddard and I really wanted to check out their powerhouse dance assembly. And before I talk about that, I just want to give kudos to all the Stoddard staff because the day before it was raining. So the thing with Stoddard, as you know, their, the area in which they put their chairs is grass, so whenever it rains, they have to move it, but they were able to move it in an instant. So kudos to them, but I'm really proud particularly about this assembly because I've been to many of assemblies where they just perform and yay, this and that, get the kids all riled up. But as they were performing, they were pausing and teaching students terminologies. They had flashcards. It was really music education 2.0. So that was awesome to see that. On the 16th, I went to James Madison and I want to give a huge kudos to the CalFresh Healthy Living Program Coordinator Hazel Chicas for providing our parents with classes on labels, right? I know that they also have amazing classes also on planning healthy meals. I think this is very significantly important, especially here in the United States. And I mean, I'm going to be honest, I'm not the healthiest when it comes to my food choices and I know that affects my learning. And I know that will go down, not just to parents, but also to the kids as well. So thank you so much for that service that you provide. And then also I want to congratulate Dr. Grace on your ACSA Award. We're very proud of you. And also Monday was the National American Sign Language ASL Day, so I want to also honor that day as well. Thank you very much.
All right. So since our last board meeting, lots of really big, significant things have taken place. Number one, of course, being spring break. But no, really, that's always a good time to relax and rejuvenate and unplug and just really refresh. I had this great conversation earlier about spring break and just really how it's just essential at this part of the year. But AESD sports competition at the River Arena with my colleagues, fantastic. But what made it for me was the fact that I had so many of my colleagues from AUHSD show up who were like, wow, what? Like, you know, just in awe of everything. And they wanted to go back to the, what's it called in the back room? The, the control room and check it out. And we were able to give them small, like in small groups, no talking, you know? And they were just like, oh, this is great. And it was exciting for me as an individual, just because of the fact that the facility where this is located, we've had this event there, it keeps getting bigger and better. And it's just, this is what we do in AESD. And my colleagues left just completely amazed, to say the least. The 23rd speech tournament, it was awesome. It was a great day. Literally, we had so much fun and I did not know how it was going to turn out just because of the fact that it was pouring rain, pouring rain, coming down in torrents of rain. And I was like, I don't know if the families are going to be here, but no, it was over at Roosevelt Elementary School and it was packed. Tons of people. I really appreciated the way that they ran it. They had different categories. They had them in English and in Spanish, which was great. It was just an overall fun event for our community that everybody just had a great time with. So I really appreciated that and that was on the 23rd of March. On the 11th, I too also participated in the OCO Town Hall that, you know, we were invited to from one of our parents here in AESD, Ms. Maritza Bermudez. It was cool to talk with some of our alumni from AESD who, you know, some of us have watched grow up through the schools in AUHSD and are now young adults, you know? And that's, that's a weird, you know, kind of situation, like tonight, when some of the classified employees, I don't know how many, we were talking about that, there was like maybe like four or five of us that we've taught before and it's so cool to see them here in our district, working, being a part of our community, you know? And that's what a lot of us have done. I just want to, before I conclude my report, just want to give a shout out to all of our Assistant Principals for their National Assistant Principals Week, which took place April 1st through April 5th. You all are amazing. I honestly never had such appreciation for our Assistant Principals until, huh, I actually became one. And then, Steema Palooza! I do not want you all to forget about Steema Palooza. Steema Palooza is so fun, taking place Luera High School this Saturday, 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock. We have transportation.